Okay. Call the meeting to order. Can everybody please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it an honor which is shared, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great government of our country.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. We'll just note as a roll call that we have everyone present tonight. Oh, yeah, that's okay. Before we get into the regular agenda, I have an executive session announcement to make. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting at 7:15 to discuss potential litigation. Does...I don't have any forms, but does anybody have any request for public comment at this time? Okay, then I'll hand it over to Dr. Shirk for presentations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alexander. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Boyer, our principal at the middle school, and he's going to introduce his team tonight regarding robotics. Mr. Boyer.
Good evening. Tonight, I have with us Deb McElvein and some of her robotics students. Robotics is new to the middle school this year, the robotics and Lego program, so we're in like our first year, and we have a number of kids that meet ninth period, meet on different nights of the week, and kind of anytime that, you know, Mrs. McElvein wants them to work together. And this year, we entered a competition in which, you know, we took first place. I'm gonna let Deb explain most of the logistics of it, but the kids that are here today are the ones that participated in the competition. They have some examples of their robots to show you, and they have a little skit that they like to perform. All right.
Good evening, everyone. As Matt said, my name's Deb McElvein. I'm the computer technology teacher. In computer technology class, grades six through eight, students learn coding. There's lots of languages. They basically, they learn JavaScript, Swift, which is an Apple coding language, and they also learn block programming. Block program is what we use to control the Lego robotics. One of the challenge courses that the students do is they code, they write code to have the robot detect using color sensors all the different colors on the course. So this is, they use their iPad and they write code. I was also fortunate this year to take a group of students to the Lego robotic competition. This is my first year, and at the Lego robotic competition, there's four events. There's the robot design, there's the robot game, core values, and there's also product invention. The topic for the competition was hydrodynamics. So the students identified a problem, they researched the problem, and they developed a product or a solution. So what they did was they came up with a, well, the problem was that the water fountains were very dirty. So they came up with a sanitizer that they would spray on the spigot of the water fountain. And they won first place for the innovation solution award, and I'll describe the award to you. This award recognizes a team solution that is exceptionally well-considered and creative with good potential to solve the problem researched. This team looked at their daily life experience and found an opportunity to improve our drinking water. They presented their, in front of the judges, they performed a little skit, and then the judges interviewed them and asked them some questions, so I'm gonna let them perform their skit, that they did at the competition.
Are you tired of being thirsty and drinking from a disgusting water fountain?
Yeah.
Stranger danger.
Well, no more. Introducing the Spigot Sanitizer Spray.
How does it work?
We use mouthwash and R-A antiseptic to put on the spigot to kill off bacteria, since it already kills germs in your own mouth and doesn't affect the person drinking the water fountain or the water fountain system.
But how?
We contacted professionals at a local water company, and they told us that mouthwash should not affect the water system, the person drinking the water fountain, or the backflow prevention devices, a device that's used on water fountains to prevent private plumbing blowing the public distribution water systems.
Not only that, the Spigot Sanitizer Spray helped prevent common illnesses like the flu or just the common cold. Unlike in 2011 to 2012, 32 cases of water-caused diseases were reported.
Now, thanks to this Spigot Sanitizer Spray.
I should really consider retiring.
There were actually 22 teams at the competition, and like I said, the scorecard only won the project convention.
And that's all we have, and thank you.
Could you introduce the girls, please? I'm sorry. Introduce themselves, they like.
My name's Sydney, and I'm a seventh grader.
My name's Cecilia, and I'm a seventh grader.
My name's Miley, and I'm also a seventh grader.
We were actually all in this McElveins class, and we worked on it during class times a lot of times due to come in ninth period toward, and we also just come in on days that we were off, and we actually were saying if we were able to, we can eye vote for the judges to show them our problems or what happens.
Before we run off, I've got a question. So what interested you in code? How did you guys decide to join the team and to get involved in the robotics?
Well, last year, we had whole coding unit computer class, and this McElvein wouldn't want to do it this year. So she picked us, let few from a couple classes from last year who had an interest in coding or were like, never about it, not for abandon.
Actually, another team here at school that are interested in students, they've been doing it here a few years, but it's only case who are in our class who are able to do this, so it's a fact that we're not making the right decision. I can open up the game a little bit for other students, or just come back to the topic, but I'm, I'm also looking at that.
Congratulations on joining you. Are you looking at a career or looking at a career in science or engineering?
I am. She made this in like last one hour.
Teamwork ends. Teamwork ends with this.
Well, congratulations, ladies, and thank you very much, Ms. McElvein, for helping me. This is terrific. This is what we want to see.
They've been talking about this all week, so I think you can tell they're not very shy at all. Thanks.
Okay. Moving forward, I will motion at this time that we approve the monthly board action minutes from the March meetings on 3/13 and 3/27, so that's 5.1 and 5.2. So motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $6,682,639.20 for March 2018 as presented.
Motion and a second for the granting of orders. Any questions or comments?
Couple questions. The lights and sound that were rented for $8,000 for the high school play, was that budgeted? And can you talk a little bit about the high school being just redone with new lighting and new sound and the fact that we still need to be renting this amount of equipment each year?
The play has its own budget each year as part of the high school's budget. The lighting and sound were a significant portion of that budget. We are looking at whether or not this is the appropriate amount of equipment and whether or not there is something we need to add to our inventory of equipment. A lot of this, a lot of the sound was for portable microphones that are taped on to the students. So those are, those are things that break easily and walk away often. So there is a question whether or not that's a good investment or not for the once or twice a year that you use them. However, there was also supplemental lighting. We're gonna do the same evaluation with that, so.
I appreciate that. The second question, we see detail in the checks that we're approving now, which I appreciate. It wasn't always that way, but you've been providing that for the past couple of years, I guess. But we don't see, we do approve a check to pay the credit cards each month, but we don't really see exactly what we're paying. Is it, not looking to add, you know, don't want you re-typing anything, but I wonder if we could get a scan of those credit cards to see what exactly we're paying for, how they're being used?
Is it something we can do, Mr. Nestor? Or how, yeah?
We have the ability to do it. It's just a question whether the entire board wants it, whether it's something the board wants.
That's a fair statement.
Since it's quiet, I would ask, is there any objection to that?
Actually, I just don't feel it's necessary. I mean, I trust in the administrators to go through it. I personally am the administrator for our credit cards at work, and I go through it with a fine-tooth comb with receipts, so I just don't think it's needed.
I honestly don't have a problem with it. I mean, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to see what we're paying for. You know, I look at my credit card statement every month and make sure that it's all good, so.
So just going around the table, just, so just, the board is supporting having the credit card component broken out, is that what I'm hearing? Yep. Yes. Okay.
Just how much more extra work would that require? I'm just asking. I mean, I agree transparency is always best. I just wanna know what extra.
We scan all the invoices into our computer system, in our accounting system, anyway.
So for the, so the, before we proceed, is it something you want us to start next month? How far, is that, next month, work?
Yeah, just moving forward.
Okay, moving forward, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I move that we approve the treasuries in court for March 2018 as presented and file it for audit.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward with the report of the superintendent, I'd like to turn it over to our student board, Rut, and Mason, give us a shout out.
Right. Okay. So I'm going solo tonight, so this is a little bit shorter. So I'll just start with the middle schools, or I'm sorry, not the middle schools, the elementary school, we're in the middle school. Ringing Rocks, they'll be having their art and art show and book fair on April 25th, starting at 6:00 p.m. Also, their grandparents' day is April 27th. For West Pots Grove, the Spring Bingo will be this Friday, April 13th, starting at 6:30 p.m. Then on April 19th, West Pots Grove will be hosting their Wellness Night, and their grandparents' day is April 30th. Lower Pots Grove, the third and fourth grade chorus concert will be on April 26th, starting at 7:00 p.m. And then the middle school, the PSSAs started this week and will continue for a while, or the window. Last week's, they selected the middle schoolers that were gonna be inducted in the National Junior Honor Society. And then for the high school, the National Honor Society is hosting a volleyball tournament for high school students only on April 20th, starting at 6:30 p.m. And the much talked about, I know, at least going to high school, I know this is something that they talk about a lot, the biology trip to Wallops Island is gonna be on April 15th, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mason. Any other questions from the board, from Mason? Okay, moving forward to action items for personnel. We start with 10.1, and we ask for you to approve the professional staff retirement as submitted.
I would like to make a motion that we approve action items for personnel 10 through 1 through 10 through 7.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to combine all personnel action items. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Action items for business. We ask the board, and we recommend approval of the contract for Bond Homie Adult Care Center, or Care, excuse me, for transitional services for one student at a rate of $17.80 an hour for a maximum of six and a half hours per day for the remainder of the 1718 school year at a total approximate cost of $6,500.
It was 11-1 and 11-2. So we have a motion and a second for 11-1 and 11-2. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
11.3, the Middle School Roof Replacement and Structural Repairs Project. We'd like authorization to execute the agreement with Weatherproofing Technologies, Inc., for the replacement of Pots Grove Middle School roof and other structural repairs upon completion of legal review. The contracted amount is $2,387,113.61.
We are hopeful that we'll be able to conclude the contract in the next couple of days. What I think Dave found out this afternoon from my colleague was that we've negotiated a number of contracts of like form with this roofing contractor. So we've got a call into them saying, why don't you use the form that you agreed to before? It seems to put them in an intellectually difficult position to argue they won't agree to what they've agreed to multiple times. I mean, right now, they proffered a form that, and I understand it completely, I mean, their counsel represents them, it's a form that we can't agree to. But again, we have a history with them, and so I'm hopeful that they will be, what I've termed intellectually honest, by saying, yeah, we've agreed to it before, we'll agree to it again. So we have no reason not to believe that, so I'm hopeful that we can wrap it up shortly, because I know this is a summer project, there's some time exigencies.
Okay. Anybody else, questions or comments on the roof? I know we've been at this for a long time now in facilities, and then with updates at the board level, so we're good? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thanks.
Budget transfers, 11.4. We ask the board to approve budget transfers for March 2018 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for budget transfers. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Moving on to action items for education, the district calendar, the revisions for 2017-18. We ask the board to approve and amend the revised 2017-18 calendar as submitted.
Motion and a second for the revision of the calendar. Any questions or comments? So before I ask for the vote, do you just wanna let everybody know what the change was? I mean, not us, but...
Well, the changes to the calendar where we took our staff in-service days and turned them into Act 80 days, which count as student days, and that, because of the time, the amount of time that we spend in the classrooms during the course of 181 days, we go over as far as the hours that we need for our kids to qualify for our reimbursement. So this year, with that being said, we use three, we switch three in-service days to Act 80 days, and what that allows us to do, it allows our students to graduate and be done on the 8th of June, and then our contractual days with the teachers, they'll follow up on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday with different various professional development projects that we have going on, so their last day won't be until Wednesday, the 13th of June, but everybody will finish up on the 8th. Okay? Doctor, did I hit that right? Okay.
I would like to thank the administration for working with us on that. I think a lot of our, a lot of our community will be very appreciative of having a sort of a date certain for that graduation. I appreciate you guys looking into that and making this work.
Thanks. Okay, so any other questions or comments before we go? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay, moving forward with conference attendance. We're looking for attendance, conference attendance for the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Annual Conference. We're asking the board to approve this conference as submitted.
Okay, so a motion to combine 12-2 and 12-3 for conference attendance. Second, okay. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on these two conferences?
Just a comment, I'll be voting no for the purpose of the second conference. While I support the attendance of that conference, I don't see a reason for two staff, to pay for two staff to go. It seems to me one could go and take good notes, or, well, not, right, not going, but, you know, to pay for it, to be seen online. So I'll be voting no just for that purpose.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Action items regarding policy. We ask the board to approve the revised new policies as submitted.
A motion to combine 13-1 and 13-2. 13-2 is the deletion of policy 310, and I think that's because it was replaced by 311. Okay. Okay, motion and a second for 13-1 and 13-2. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Action items regarding miscellaneous. This has to do with the MCIU board member. What we're asking the board to do tonight is a recommendation to nominate a board member for the position of the MCIU board for a three-year term, starting July 1st of 2018. At this time, Mr. Alexander, you've currently taken the spot up to date, but we're looking to have a person take this on, please, full-time. We have nominations from the board, please.
Before we forcefully volunteer anybody, does anyone want to do this or can do this?
I'm gonna, Mrs. Becker, does this have to be done, or can we work on this for the next two weeks or even beginning of May? I know there's, they need to have it done. In two weeks? So it's 10th, 17th, 24th. So we really need somebody tonight. The next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so the homework for the board is to have somebody voluntold to do this job for the MCIU for the next three years, starting in July 1st of 2018. Okay?
And I'll say, in the meantime, then, we can communicate as needed, but I've been doing it for the last four months, so I can at least fill you in as much as I know. But, you know, as far as going before that, we had Diane and then Rick. So, I mean, they have much longer experience on that than I do. If anybody has communication with those two still, feel free to reach out, but I've got a big old four months' experience under my belt. So if anybody wants to talk about what all it involves, I'd be happy to get you up to date.
And we will take nominations ahead of time. So if this is decided by, you know, by someone who wants to step to the plate in the next couple of weeks before the meeting, we can actually put that, you know, on the agenda. That would be very helpful. So, thank you. Moving on to reports. JOC, anything to report, Mrs. Grimm?
Yes, I do. We had our meeting last night and all went well, of course. Enrollment, we have a tentative of 5% increase, 580 students. We have 299 in the morning and 281 in the afternoon. And like I said, it's a 5% increase. Pots Grove has 29th graders. Programs that are already filled up are carpentry, commercial art, cosmetology, diesel tech, early childhood, electrical, health science tech, and sports medicine are already filled. So we are, the word's getting there, we're doing fantastic things over there. We do have a car show on Sunday, May 5th, rain or shine, 9 to 3, and it benefits the Skills USA. And all vehicles are welcome for a moderate donation. And like I said, all the funds go to the Skills USA. So there'll be food refreshments, all sold by the students, demonstrations by the transportation clusters, various automotive vendors in attendance. There'll be a spring plant sale. Music will be provided by DJ Mixology. The Western Center Summer Camp preregistration will be available. And 50/50 tickets will be sold to benefit the Steven Bruno Memorial Fund. So anything you would want to know about it, go on their website. It's a great time. Summer camps, we have 102 campers enrolled and culinary is closed due to reaching capacity. We had our 399 review, which is our state audit, and we did, we had a very good review, a lot of accommodations, including labs, overall use of space, safety, non-traditional events to increase enrollment, marketing recruitment strategies, and connection with business and industry. Professional development, Ms. Hetzel, our Director of Technology Attended Career Scope Training for Success Coordinators. Career Scope is a software, and it's an excellent tool in measuring a student's interest in certain career, but also reviews the aptitude for students choosing a career. It helps place students in areas of interest and in an area where they are most likely to succeed. Commercial art, I cannot say enough about this girl, but Pots Grove Alexi Nifer was just recognized again on Friday. She found some graphic design work and it'll be featured on Life Water Social Media Instagram. She'll be exhibiting her artwork and these are water bottles that are all designers. So again, I mean, she's on fire. So proud of her. Limerick Fire Department, on their website, they have scenes of our active shooter drill, which was conducted on March 10th. And just one thing, and I might need Mark's help on this. We have, at our JOC, we have a superintendent of record. And we rotate that. And when we did our reorganization in January, we elected collectively as a board to have Dr. Gooden carry us through till the end of January. But now we have to have a unanimous consent to amend the current term for the superintendent. And basically what we're doing is we're changing the term from July, which is what the amendment says, we want to change it to January. So when we all do our reorganization, we also reorganize the superintendent of record. But with this, we have to have collectively all three sending schools boards approval. How'd I do, Mark?
I would suggest that we put it on for one of the May meetings. There's no urgency. I got the amendment out today to Dr. Shirk. I got it to Spring Board. That wasn't hard because that's my partner. And I did send it out to Upper Perk, to the superintendent there, the solicitor, and he acknowledged receipt. So let's see what happens over the next month or so. It's, the only thing I would clarify, it's called a unanimous consent, which we steal from the corporate world, where you waive the requirements of meetings and certain formalities. The bylaws say in order to amend the Articles of Agreement, that you have to have a convention. And remember, the school board for the JOC is all 27 members from the sending districts. Joint Operating Committee is different than the Vocational Technical Board. I know Patty gets upset when I call it vocational technical. I'm only stealing from the, I'm only stealing from the code. So it doesn't literally have to be unanimous, but it's a waiver of the 60 days and a formal convention. And then it will take two out of the three boards to approve it and a majority of the 27 board members. So I'll talk to Dr. Shirk and we'll talk to see where it's going with the others and put it on sometime in May and then we can get back to the JOC to see whether it was approved here or not. And the essence of it is simple. I mean, I think Patty did it very well. It's a two-year term of the superintendent of record. They're proposing changing it from currently under the Articles of Agreement. It starts in July. They're suggesting his term or her term start in January. For historical record-keeping, I don't know what makes a difference. It was that way until 2005 and then at that time, we did a similar amendment, changing it. So now the board, the JOC, thinks it might be wise to date it as of January as opposed to July.
Our next meeting will be May 7th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimm. Like to move now to some committee items and we'd like to, let's see. We'd like you to accept the minutes for the facilities and operations held on March 13th, 2018 as submitted.
Okay, motion and a second to accept the minutes of the Operations and Facility Committee meeting. Any questions or comments on that one? All in favor?
Why, just the one comment, really briefly. Tonight, we just had another Facilities Committee meeting and we went through the last of the budget presentations. I wanted to thank all of the members of the staff and the administration who worked on those, really, really made a strong effort to control costs. And I think we're going to see the benefit of that when we talk about budget later on. Many, many of the areas had minimal or no increases. Most all of the increases, with one or two exceptions, came from costs that we literally do not control, where people are moving into the district, moving out of the district, or things that we do not control. So that speaks well to everybody and all the teamwork. I know how hard it is to do that and watching a lot of things happen. But I really do appreciate everyone's effort. I think it'll, taxpayers will thank you as well.
Can we just add, for the sake of the media, and correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, the budget, or the proposed budget includes $400,000 increase specific to charter school, correct? It's going up $400,000, which is a big chunk of money, yet our administration is still working very hard as that cost is out of our hands to keep, you know, the overall budget down as much as possible. So $400,000 increase to charter schools.
Well, I would, I guess I'm going to need a little bit of clarification on that. Yes, there is a change of $400,000 because there's an additional number of students who are, have moved into the district and are now going to the charter school. It was my understanding that the money was a, the money is going to be spent on those children. And it's based on an average of what the cost to the district is for those children. Is that right? So we could have all of those children sitting in our classroom and still have to pay that money. So it's, I don't, I'm not sure that it's quite the way it's being portrayed. I mean, those kids are coming. They're either going to be sitting in our classrooms or they're going to be going to a charter school. So it's not the same thing as we've got a $500,000 bill that is going to some bad nefarious people. It's that these kids have come into our district and we're educating them in the way that they choose and their families choose, which I think is a little bit nicer way to say what's going on.
I almost said, Dr. Dave Nestor, Mr. Nestor, do you have a professional opinion based on experience? Whereas I understand the state's formula for that, but I don't, would you say it's a kind of an equivalent number that, you know, if those students were here, we'd be spending, you know, this additional $400,000 per se? Or does it break down differently?
Adding one student to a class is not going to necessarily increase the cost of that class. So it depends on whether, how many kids would be in, you know, kindergarten and how many kids would be in first grade, et cetera. But if we had, I believe this added up to about 20 kids. If we dispersed 20 kids across our K to 12 situation, our scenario, we probably would not need to add any teachers. We probably would not need to add significantly more supplies. So we're, this is a cash flow issue. It is money going, leaving the district. Yes, it is for a choice that parents have the ability to make. But if we took back those 20 kids, it probably wouldn't cost us anymore. Or significantly more, anyway.
So we still need to accept the minutes. All in favor of that? Aye.
At this time, we'd like the Policy Committee to report out on their meeting that was held March 27th.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. We reviewed two policies, the first being policy 816, electronic communication and social media. A very simple addition was made based on a recommendation from the Technology Department and their experience and what they're hearing in other districts, not specific due to an issue problem that we have had here at the district. And I want to thank them for being proactive versus reactive. The addition was a 19th item added to things that staff members are prohibited from doing, which is linking a district email address to any personal social media accounts or personal websites. So the committee reviewed that, discussed that, and moved that for 30-day review. Second policy was 808 Food Services, which was reviewed because of some legislative changes regarding food shaming. So this has more of an impact on the day-to-day, how things are done through the lunch line. So this is going to have some changes in how that happens. Basically, student, help me if I get any of this wrong, Jim Scott or Dr. Harney, but students that can't be singled out. They can't be told if they owe money. They can't be given a special sandwich. I know when I was growing up, if a student, you know, you had to feed them, but they get peanut butter and jelly. Can't do that anymore. They get a regular meal. However, if they go up for snacks or extras, I think even, they're simply told that they can't, you know, they're not told why, but just that they can't get that. So that, those changes were not our choice. Unfortunately, that came from some legislative changes. So we also discussed families that owe money and the ability to collect that money. We looked at the pros and cons of using collection agencies and that kind of thing. So I think the opinion of the committee is, it's really more of a, what do we say, kind of a moral issue or just, it's the, the idea behind it is a little bothersome, that there's not more that we can do in collecting past due amounts. So, but those changes were made as per requirements from the state, so we moved that for 30-day review. Any additions from anybody in the committee? Go ahead.
Just on the, part of the discussion was also not just on collecting money, but a lot of it was also on trying to get ways for parents to sign up for the free lunches that are eligible, since that was, you know, it's the horse-to-water type thing. So we were, a lot of time was trying to come up with ways that we could increase, you know, awareness of the program and to get the parents to actually follow through and do the signing up, so.
Sorry, I'll add too, one change that I think came through the legislative process, I would think on a positive note, is we can now conduct direct certification three times per year using the student eligibility system, some sort of computerized program with the state, to identify students who are eligible for free lunch, which we weren't able to do prior.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. At this time, we'd like to move forward with the Athletics and Co-Curricular Committee. It was held on April 3rd with their update.
Well, thank you. This was quite a, quite a meeting and I was, I was very pleased to see such a great turnout. Just to recap slightly, there was like three key points. Mr. Dorenzo outlined in review on all the new and renewed sponsorship details for the Market Street. These are sponsors that help fund the Market Street Fund. So the Tri-County Credit Union renewed their sponsorship of the high school gym for another three years. The ROG Orthotics will be the new stadium press box sponsor for the next three years, replacing Exeter Orthodontics. So, you know, Mr. Drenz was always looking into changing and what he did explain too, that if we have a credit union, we just keep one. We don't, we don't try to get another one. We just try to be fair to everybody. If we have one orthodontics, we try not to stick with one. So there's no competition there, which I thought was really fair. Mr. Dorenzo, also, what was discussed last year is the athletic budget always seems to be in a negative. And we're realizing a lot of the PIAA referees that we have to have is one of the main causes. So we were trying to figure out how to bring some revenue in. So we had decided collectively as a committee that maybe we should charge the turf field in spring. We made all the announcements. We thought this would give us a little bit of an edge. Well, it's not working out. We have angry parents. We have them sitting in their cars watching the game instead of paying. And I kind of, I get it. And it's just not working out. So we're going to really relook at that for next year because we're going to have to come be creative with other ways because that's just not working out. It's just not paying. And then the passionate part of the meeting came, and this was a big discussion on the requirements for eligibility for co-curricular activities. So Mr. Hutt had, did a presentation on what he felt we should look at as a, as a school district, raised the bar. And we had a team of 11 teachers, head coaches, and one student, which I was very impressed with, by the way. But just looking at what the other school districts do, what their bar is, how it would affect our students. We have 54% on free lunches and, you know, we don't want to lose kids. We want to be passionate with kids. So it was a great discussion, I felt. A lot of us, like myself, are for the students and I totally believe in what we're doing now.
Excuse me. If someone disagrees with you, they're not for the students? Is that what you're implying?
No.
That's what it sounded like.
Well, that's not what I mean.
Okay.
No, that's not what I mean. But, but I just feel like it was a great discussion. We are going to continue it and that'll be at our next meeting in May 22nd. And the other issue that came up is athletics have a bar in a PIAA, but we do not have any eligibility for any, any of the music, any of the band. So we have to kind of like look at it as a whole and discuss it, but we went way over time, so we did adjourn it. But I would like to do a shout-out to Elijah Gallin. He sat there in the room and now I know his family, but he, he really hit home with me when he said, basically, we cannot put all of our students in the box and think they're all the same. You know, some kids are not book smart. Some kids achieve other things that are easier for them. And, and just hearing from a student and his side really, really hit home and I was really proud of him. So, so that concludes the athletic. So, so that concludes the Athletic Committee meeting.
I'd like to add a couple of things, if I may, that I think, as an observer, need to be pointed out. First of all, thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Each board member that was present cares about the students, and we are here for the students, even those that disagree with your opinion. Need to make sure that's clear. I would disagree that that part of the meeting was a great, quote, "discussion." And I only bring this up because you bring that stuff. I was quite disappointed as one in the way that that portion of the meeting was handled. I felt not all opinions were being allowed to be shared freely, and I don't think that's appropriate for a committee of this board. Each of the nine members plus the two students and the administrators have the opportunity and the job, really, to speak and share their opinion. And just to clarify, that the decision of the committee, which I'm not on, I just happened to come early for my meeting, was to continue this important discussion and to decide what is best for the students. It is a difficult discussion, that I would agree, and it is a passionate one, I would agree with that, too. But hopefully, moving forward, that, that committee will be able to have professional dialogue and discuss amongst themselves and receive feedback from other staff, not just those invited to the meeting to voice one side of an issue. So I look forward to attending the committee moving forward to also give my opinion. And I would, and I appreciate Mr. Leach, near the end of the meeting, pointing out the importance, too, that all sides are heard. This is a difficult topic. This district has a mission, and I can't quote it right now, but can you? Thank you. You have it right there?
Yeah.
But basically, to educate, inspire, I believe is in there, all our students. The mission of the Pots Grove School District is to educate and inspire all students to excel as productive, responsible citizens and lifelong learners. And that is most definitely what I sensed in, in hearing Mr. Hutt share his opinion. And I think that the issue is just coming to agreement of what the best way to do that is. And I, and I think we can get there, and I think we will. Thank you.
I think those are excellent points. And I think where, where we want to go, and there's always room for compromise, there's always room for discussion and getting there. I think the, the overall goal of excellence is, is an outstanding one. I think that we can find a way to improve where we are or improve what we're expecting along with encouraging students to do more. I, I think one of the discussion points I heard was, you know, we, we can use athletics to encourage kids to do better in school, and I think that's, that's, that's a great point. We want all of our students to excel, and we want all of them to have the opportunity to excel at something. If they're, if what they excel at is, is sports, that's fine, we ought to give them an opportunity to participate in the sports. I think we, we still need to have some measure of accountability. And what we're getting, what we need to work on, what we need to agree on, is what is the appropriate level of encouragement and accountability? Where is it? Is it the, is it the minimum, or is it a little bit more? And how can we all participate in that, meaning the teachers? If a student is having academic problems, that's not something that happens overnight. It's more, it's not a systemic thing where there's no hope. It's a thing where if somebody's having trouble, people need to stand up. We need to either get that student a tutor, we need to, you know, have a, have a conversation with the student, the coaches and the staff. It needs to be more inclusive, and I've, I mentioned this a little bit earlier in our meeting that we had before. We've got to get back to the idea that this is a community, and that we all share responsibility and share the benefits of it. We all have a stake in the success of the students of this district. We all have a stake in the success of our businesses. We all have a stake in the success of the homeowners and the taxpayers. We want everybody to do well, you know, we'll use the cliche, a rising tide lifts all boats. Let's expect more from our students. Let's demand more from our students and from each of ourselves as well. And let's agree on what that expectation can be. We don't have to go all the way to the top the first time, we can do it incrementally. And as we have success, we can maybe raise the bar a little farther each time. So we have, we have a path to success. We have a path to compromise and agreement. So I think the, the idea is, is a good one, and what we need to discuss is how do we implement it, and how do we do it best for our district? So, thank you for that.
I agree. I'm really excited about this discussion. I want to get everybody included, coaches, teachers, parents, everyone on the board. I think we are better than the state minimum. I think we should push the kids in all activities to excel to their maximum potential. I think they're better than that bare minimum, and look forward to an open and fair discussion amongst everybody moving forward.
Patty, I have a question. Did you say that we are at 54% free and reduced? Is that correct, Dave?
I'd have to double check. I, I think it's a little bit lower than that.
Because the last I heard was like 33%, not 54. That seems...
I can clarify what it actually, it was, we have 426 students that are involved in athletics. Of those 426 students, 54% of those are in the economically disadvantaged.
That makes a little more sense. I just want to piggyback off of everybody else. I fully support raising the bar. I don't see any reason why we should accept the bare minimum from anybody or anything, and this challenges the students, it challenges the teachers, the coaches. Everybody has to have, as Dr. Shirk likes to say, skin in the game. This has to be everybody working towards a common goal, like we all are right now, and there is no reason why we cannot expect more. No reason whatsoever. And the fact that Pots Grove would accept the minimum, to me, is just, I, I can't even wrap my brain around why we would do that, because that's not Pots Grove.
So it sounds like it was a, a rough start to a productive conversation, maybe, but it sounds like we're all on the same path. Now, I, I do agree, I mean, and I don't even maybe see it so much as expecting or demanding, but just us, you know, helping to, just as the athletic coaches do, coach a kid up and bring out the best in them. I mean, we should be doing that in the classroom, just the same, and, you know, coaches and teachers, most of the, or many of the coaches are teachers, but working together to more, I'd say, you know, in my mind, more than demand, but encourage and nurture the best out of, out of our students, so that when we do send them out into the world, they're just that little bit better prepared, that little bit better equipped, and we're, we should, I mean, we're all here to help them do that. That I have no doubt. Differences of opinion are healthy, and it sounds like we, we got it set on the right track now. So thank you, everybody, for, for, you know, committee and, and rest of the board for, for supporting the collaboration to get us moved forward in, in that aspect. So thanks. Al, do you have?
Just to clarify one little thing, because obviously I'm in the Athletic Committee. I, I have to disagree a little bit with you, Bill. I thought we had a decent discussion, and we tried to make sure all sides were, were going through. Obviously, the teachers and the administrators had their opinion, and I do think they kind of maybe pushed their side a little bit. But I, I tried to make sure that everybody understood that we had both sides to look at, and we are going to continue with both sides to look at, and it's not going to be a one-sided discussion. I thought, as rough as maybe it sounded, it, it really was not. It wasn't as passionate as I, as I think maybe some of it's coming out. I think that we did have a very strong, good start to the discussion. Again, start to the discussion.
Do you feel different?
I do feel very differently about how that went. I thought it was extremely one-sided, and if you disagreed with it, you were berated. And at the end of the meeting, it was told that someone didn't know why this was being presented, and they hoped it never was again. So I do not agree with that. I think this is extremely worth considering, and I think, from what I hear now, everybody is on board with it, and really excited about collaborating with people to find where the bar is for this district. But we do think we're above the state minimum. That's what I think.
And let me add, what I'm feeling and what I'm hearing from the various opinions, and please, you know, if anybody disagrees, but I'm hearing that what we're saying is, we believe in you. To the students, to the teachers, we believe in you.
I don't want to prolong this, but I'm going to, so there. I agree with that, we all do. I think one, one of the things we have to keep our focus on, as Patty mentioned from, when she heard from the student, is that we can't, the one thing that I think would be detrimental would be if we said that there was a uniform standard for every single person. Okay? If we have a student that has, is extremely academically challenged and is doing their best and is making an effort and has a tutor and does all those things, and doesn't necessarily meet our improved standard, but still meets the state standard, I think that would be a reasonable exception to consider on a case-by-case basis. So we're not going to say it's a one-size-fits-all standard where everybody has to have no failures here, or one failure, or whatever. I think we should apply it. The state minimum is the state minimum, but we should have exceptions on a very limited and case-by-case basis, and only granted if people are working towards making every effort to improve. So I think that's what I'm saying, on the way, the path to compromise includes reasonable discussions and exceptions when warranted.
And I do believe, this, this, this process for me will be number three. I've, I've been through this process twice before, once as a coach and once as an administrator. So I am familiar with it. I do believe there's, there is, there's room for compromise, and, and within systems that we can create, and I think the goal of athletics and administration in the next couple of weeks is to put together a couple of proposals for the committee to look at that, that incorporates a, a higher academic standard, but puts triggers in place so that we can remediate along the way and not put, not, not put anybody at a disadvantage as far as having them not have the opportunity to participate without proper procedures in place. As you've heard me say before, as long as we have the structures in place, then our students can be successful and they understand those expectations. So that's really what we're working on now administratively, and we'll, we'll do that for you next couple of weeks, so we're ready, ready for May. And then I think we go back to the discussion phase and, and decide what's best for our kids. But there's room for compromise. You know, Mr. Lindgren, you said it, and a lot of people have said that. And I think that we can create higher expectations, but at the same time, put triggers in place that everybody is responsible, our, our teachers, our coaches, and our students and our families. So I think, I think we can, I think we can pull it off. I've been, I've been part of it enough that I, I understand the dynamic, and I understand the dynamic around the table. But we just, we definitely don't want to take anything away from anybody on purpose just by our language. You know, we want to make sure we have a system in place to make it work, work along the way. So we're, we're definitely, I just want to ensure the board that, that we're working on that.
I just want to add one more thing real quick, and, and that is, it seems like everybody's engaged here. I don't know what the plan would be to continue this conversation, but the Athletics Committee, I think, only meets four times a year. So, okay. Yes. So if you need, yeah, I would just say, you know, if we need to continue on after that, or if, if you're at a point where you want to bring it to the, the full board, I mean, May, you're getting close to the end of the, the board meeting season, and then I know athletics meets right back at the beginning of the next school year. So I would just keep that in mind, if, to keep the conversation going instead of once a quarter.
And just, just to reiterate, we are also looking at all the clubs, all the band, music, you know, anything that's a privilege. Is that what we said? What did we say?
Anything that is a privilege and is secondary.
It takes time, or the time of the band, the time of the sport, all in the same world. But right now, all those other, athletics are the only ones that have rules, get a little, none of the other ones have.
Patty, they may not have rules on the books, but I know for a fact, my daughter was in the middle school musical three years in a row, and I don't know if it was school policy or if it was Mrs. Bean's policy, but if anyone had difficulty and had failing grades or falling grades, it was addressed immediately. And she would not, she would not allow any of her students who were participating to falter in their classes. And that was, believe me, that was a big deal. These kids, I, my daughter would come to school at quarter to eight in the morning, and I would pick her up nine o'clock at night. So there was a lot of chances for their grades to fall, but she pushed them and she made sure that her kids were doing well in school. So just because it's not in writing, doesn't mean it's not happening.
Let me add to that. That's a good point. That's the second time I've heard that point regarding drama, musicals. So as the committee is looking at that, just a suggestion to, you know, to speak to Ms. Bean, hey, how do you, you know, what's your philosophy? How do you do that? You know, it might just help for the other extracurriculars.
For the musical, my daughter was in, this year, in sixth grade, and it is written down. I mean, it was presented to them at the beginning, here's your schedule, and here are the rules. So it was in there. One of the things I would ask is that, you know, as you said, like triggers, is what made me think about this. I feel part of our failing is that we wait until a student gets to the point where they are failing, and then we react. It seems to me if we actually put in procedures so that, okay, you're at, you were at this grade, and we've noticed you've dropped a half grade or a grade within the last two, three weeks, you know, have some sort of action at that point, being tutoring, some peer tutoring, extra time with the teacher, so that we never have a student get to that point. But as Bob said, you know, there are, there's always going to be exceptions to any rules, and we should be able to work with those, but let's try to catch most of those before they happen so that it doesn't become an issue. Then, then everyone wins, because we end up with better students, so.
So I don't want to cut this conversation off, but we are going to keep this at committee for, for the time being. So if you do have input, contact... It's broken, it won't turn off. If you do have input or ideas, contact your committee people, your committee chair, and, and then they can discuss it at, at the, at the next meeting. Ashley, you're going to need another mic for, you have a report out, right? Do you want?
Mine's throwing a tantrum. Must be a teenager.
All right. So minutes from the Curriculum Integration and Technology Committee meeting from the third. There were only a couple of us there, myself and Mr. Parker were the only committee members there. Mr. Leach was there. You weren't a committee member, I was saying.
We don't.
And then Dr. Shirk, Dr. Ramage, and Mr. Voorhis. First thing we did was, Dr., Mr. Voorhis and Dr. Ramage went over our data review with the MAP data and RIT scores, and there were, let's see. Each grade level and content area, math and reading, has its own status norm and mean RIT, and there were 20 total areas for which a mean RIT is assigned. Pots Grove is meeting or exceeding national status norms in 16 out of 20 areas. MAP data is shared with the prin- out of 20 areas. Uh, MAP data is shared with the principals, and the principals in turn share the data with the teachers. Um, Dr. Ramage and Mr. Voorhees and instructional coaches have met with each involved grade level to assist in running reports and to use data to plan for future instruction. In collabora, collaboration with ACR, our local data for winter was re-normed. This is due to the fluctuation in our assessment calendar. It means that, um, the tests last year weren't administered at the same time this year, so they had to sort of adjust everything to fit, and then next year, it's going to be on the same, closer, like, within a two-week period of, of last year's. Um, but the data is still valuable. Uh, just because it wasn't on the same or around the same date doesn't mean it's invaluable. Um, we went over, Dr. Ramage and Mr. Voorhees went over the P-VAS data, and that is Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System. Uh, the data was based on the spring's 2017 PSSA data, and provides the projections on how students are likely to perform in the spring 2018 PSSAs. Um, they do give similar projections for the Keystone's, and each grade level percentages, percentages of the students likely to meet or exceed proficiency for both math, English, and language arts. And, um, that data is shared with building principals, and said principals then use the provided meeting protocols to have grade level meetings, department meetings, and individual meetings with teachers. And then the historically underperforming students' data analysis teams, um, per superintendent goal, these teams were developed in each building to increase student achievement by enhancing the analysis for student achievement data for all students with an emphasis on historically underperforming students. Um, and they are defined by the, um, PDE, and they include students with IEPs, um, students from various ethnicities, ethnicities, and students who are economically disadvantaged. Uh, we went over the ESSA, which is the Ever Students Succeeds Act. It basically took over the, um, No Child Left Behind Act. Um, there's new legislation, and, um, unfortunately, Keystone's appear to be rearing their ugly head again. Um, I shouldn't, ah, that didn't sound right. But Keystone's are, once again, questioning graduation, not graduation, um, but now, within the ESSA, um, Pennsylvania's going to include a career readiness, um, portion of it, uh, and chronic absenteeism as, um, part of the scoring data, which makes it a little difficult, because we can't really control chronic absenteeism as well as we would like to. Um, and, let's see, curriculum review teams, um, we were just, um, going over how those teams work, and, um, when they meet, just how everything comes together in order to review the curriculum. And then, uh, Mr. Voorhees just went, quickly went over our curriculum renewal process, and currently, right now, we are in the process of renewing science, world language, visual arts, and health. And those recommendations will be made to the committee at the April 17th meeting, which is next week. And that's it. You can switch back now if you want. Do you care?
Thanks, Ashley. Matt, can I ask one question?
Uh, obviously, we had the meeting not too long ago, and obviously, the Keystone's is the big part that I took out of it. Uh, and we're going to be reviewing, obviously, the teachers, and as we always say, the skin of the game and everything like that. Is the recommendation yet at that point where we may have to bring Keystone's back into a graduation requirement?
Uh, as was discussed in the committee, I, I brought that up to the committee and to board members, like yourself, Mr. Leach, that I, I wanted to, uh, if, at least get us thinking about it, because if we're responsible for that test, if we're being, you know, graded, if you will, on the Keystone exam, it's, it's not fair, it's not fair to the administrators and the teachers not to have that test taken seriously. Uh, and, you know, again, this year, we had, we had our opt-out, you know, we have people opting out. A lot of times, it's our, our, our top kids that, that opt out, and so I think we have to decide, so, does the board recognize that, the Keystone, or does the board recognize SAT and PSAT instead, or do they recognize our MAP testing as our growth and, and our, our way to, to, to evaluate ourselves? Um, but I don't, I think we have to give the state a chance. There's a new, um, bill in the Senate to give alternative pathways to graduation. In fact, that just came up that night. Uh, I received that email that afternoon, that this new Senate bill, forgive me, I'm going to say 1095, but I'm not sure, basically said, uh, hey, you know, just the Keystone's won't be as, won't be a good measure. There needs to be other measures. We're in a good position because we have MAP testing. We're in a good position because we have SAT, PSAT, and our AP to have, and our, plus our, um, our, our Western Center students that have, and I'm sorry, it just escaped my mind, their, the NOCTI, the NOCTI test, thank you very much from the gallery, uh, to help us evaluate students at all levels. So, I feel confident that, that, that we'll be able to put something together, but I, I just want it to be fair, you know, to, fair to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, anybody that has to put their name on that SPP score, or ESS score, now, ESSA score now, uh, they need to know that they're having the full support of the board, because if, 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 uh, the state says it's important, we're being evaluated, then we might have to make a decision down the road. So, I just want you thinking about it, uh, and the commitment that we may or may not have to make on that, in fairness to, to really, everybody, everybody involved. So, uh, for, for now, I think we'll just, we'll monitor and get back to you.
Just, um, add to your SAT, PSAT, PSAT. I just happened to see on the news tonight. Now, this is a different state, but apparently Camden County School District has added, um, SATs. They are paying for them and offering them to every child. And, uh, over the last, I think, three years, their dropout rate has reduced 5%. Now, that's not what we're fighting. We're not fighting dropout rates, but, you know, you've mentioned it before as a possibility, and I like that. I, I, I would really like to see the district go towards that, if at all possible.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Custer, for bringing that up. Really, last year, uh, we had the Senate Education Committee sitting in our boardroom, and all indicators were that was the direction that, that the State Education, uh, Committee was going to go. And somewhere between, um, you know, last summer and this fall, and I really think it comes down to dollars and cents, and that is my own opinion, because, uh, I think, you know, the state has, has spent a lot of money with DRC, and they're not, they just can't get out of the deal. They just, not yet anyhow. So, until, until that shakes out, uh, we have what we have. But, uh, there are, and I, that across the country, uh, when I was, uh, at the superintendent's conference, that was, uh, a familiar theme, that districts were paying for PSAT and SAT scores for their students, uh, to get a true picture of a nationally normed test. So, and, and the ACT, some, we've been going with ACT, but there's no pre-ACT, so you really can't, you can't benchmark it as well. But stay tuned. I appreciate your open, just keep an open mind, and, you know, we'll figure it out as, as this thing unfolds.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for their comments. Onto new business. Who's first?
I'll go first. Um, obviously, every year when we do, uh, I'm going to plug the Booster Club. Uh, every semester, or I guess every season of the sports, we come out with an athletic program. Uh, the reason why I want to ask first, of course, I want to thank all of our parents and community members that purchase our program, as this is our largest fundraiser, uh, for the entire year. This particular program, along with all our other fundraisers, helps us to donate upwards of $10,000 back to our athletics program and our students as a whole. And I hope it's okay if I actually do an individual thank you to the advertisers from our local community and everything that actually are the reason why we were able to do this program and raise so much funds for our things. And those are as follows, the Western Center, Sanatoga Ridge Community, the Gatsby, the AAA of Royers Firm, Hemmies, Hilltop, Better Homes and Garden, Dr. Pike and Galetto of Dentistry, Contagin's Funeral Home, West End Fire Hall, The Book Boys, Little Sicily, Pots Grove Recreational Board, the Pots Grove High School, PTSA, the Pots Grove Animal Hospital, Lawrence Rib DMD, The Series Home Appliances, David Hollenbach Plumbing and Heating, Apple Valley Sportswear, VSN Photography and Perm Awards, BSN Sports, HG Palermo's, Brookside Family Restaurant, our community aid program, which does those clothing boxes and such, our new sponsor, of course, ROG Orthodontics, MISHOP Physical Therapy, Tri-County Area Federal Credit Union, UCA Medical Pain Management, and of course, Ashley also has an ad, as in for her, Ashley Custer. I really would hope that these individuals and companies are the ones that are donating money back to our schools and back to our students, and I hope that we also will honor them by doing business with them. As in, they're honoring ours, we should help them. So, I'm hoping that we can also do that as well. Um, second part, I'm going to bring it up again. I know, what do you call it? We've all discussed it, the last board meeting and stuff. I'm going to talk about the YMCA again. Uh, obviously, everybody probably read the resolution that we got in the email afterwards, and then obviously, we also know that the task force has come out with a pretty strong statement as into their feelings about it. So, I'm going to ask once, one last time, as in, after the boards had the time to discuss, is there any general consensus of a statement that we would like to make, or would the board prefer us to stay neutral and not say anything, as a whole?
Personally, I'd be fine with supporting, I mean, I read through the, the statement, and it's part of our community. I feel like we should support them.
Yeah, I, I wasn't here for the last one, unfortunately, but, um, I mean, I, I don't even say I can't see any reason why we wouldn't, because I feel a lot more strongly about it than that. But I absolutely think that we should weigh in that's, that's a...
I have a question.
...benefit to our community and a, and a benefit to our district for, for that YMCA to be where it is and serve us the way it has.
Yeah, I have a question for Dr. Shirk. Uh, have you gotten a reply to your recommendations? And do you expect to get a reply? I mean, basically, at this point, it's their move, and their move could be, you know, to say, thank you for your recommendation. But what do you expect to happen next?
Um, we're, we're, we're waiting. We, we don't, don't know. Uh, we haven't, um, obviously, heard anything back since the weekend, and, um, I know that, uh, the, uh, the task force will reach back out again to the greater Philadelphia, you know, YMCA, but at this point, nothing...
Is there a plan to do something if Freedom Valley Y goes ahead and closes on June 29th?
Um, I, I probably wouldn't want to, I probably would not want to speak on that, on behalf of the whole task force regarding that, but I, I can say that there's a strong sentiment, and I think that the push will continue.
Mm-hmm.
I think I can safely say that.
Yeah, I think the push should continue. I mean, I join many of the parents here whose kids learned to swim in that pool, and I sort of learned to swim in that pool, too. But, uh, I think we should not plan that this is the end of, uh, our actions. This is probably the beginning of our actions, and we need to look at what the beginning, what happens after the beginning.
Doctor Shirk, has Freedom Valley given us the opportunity to make a presentation at their April meeting?
I'm sorry, Dick, this...
Has Freedom Valley given us the opportunity, given the task force the opportunity, to make the presentation at their April meeting?
We're working on that. That's, that's what we're working on. We're hoping.
But they haven't said yes yet.
Correct.
Thank you.
As of, as of speaking now.
Al, I, I, I support also, speaking up and resolution, whatever, comment, whatever we do. I'm behind it.
I support it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the Pots Grove School Board will make a resolution to argue against the YMCA for closing and how it's affecting our district.
Motion and a second. Right. Um, so, do we have any comments or questions from the board? And if not, we'll open this up to public comment, since it was a non-agenda motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Going around the horn here, does anybody else have any new business?
Do we have an anticipated time when that resolution's going to be available?
I, well, I would say that we would, we would be able to vote to, to, to pass it by the next meeting. We'll start working on it tomorrow.
Jeez, can't ask for better than that, can't you?
We'll start working.
Thank you.
We'll call as soon as it's done.
That, that I believe.
All right.
Okay. I, I kind of already asked, but I'll ask again. Any, any other, an op, last opportunity for public comment before we adjourn. Okay. Thanks, everybody. We'll adjourn the meeting.